Hello and welcome. My name is Ann Bergen. I’m the Chair of the Franklin School Committee. And on behalf of the entire school committee, I want to welcome you all to this legislative Recently, I had the pleasure of attending a Government 101 seminar in Franklin. It was about how local government works and how people can become involved in our community. I think it’s going to help frame our presentation tonight. I came away with two key points that are still resonating with me today. Tom Mercer, who is on the Town Council, spoke not only of his love for our community, but he reminded us all about what a great community Franklin is. And at that same event, Jeff Roy reminded us about what government does at its best, when it focuses on the common good, the power to do great things for its people. So tonight is about community and government coming together. It’s the best of both. We are honored and really grateful for our legislators for coming tonight. I’m going to wait and let Denise introduce them. They didn’t hesitate when we asked them to come. They didn’t blink an eye. They said, “We’ll be there. You tell us when. We’re there.”
I might have flinched a little.
You may have.
We said, “We’re coming.”
Yes. That’s right.
We’re all coming.
But in addition to our school committee members, when we talk about community, we have our former Chair, Kevin O’Malley, is here. He has been sort of instrumental in reminding us of the importance of, you know, being open and transparent with the community. We have members of the Town Council here. We have our Town Administrator. We have members of the Finance Committee, SAFE Coalition, CPAC. We have Franklin Education Foundation representative. We have joint PCCs. We have teachers, administrators, senior citizens. I don’t—I’m afraid I’m leaving people out, but I just want to just make sure we understand the—just how many people have made the effort to be here tonight. And you can’t talk about funding for schools unless you put funding in the context of the whole community. Schools consume a huge portion of the budget, more than—well, more than 50 percent. And the town and its citizens have done well by us, including supporting the hiring of an outstanding new superintendent for us, Dr. Sarah Hearn. One only has to attend a few town meetings to understand the complexity of funding town services. When it’s our first responders, when the police chief is going and requesting some bulletproof vests, and when our fire chief is there saying, “We need some new fire hoses,” and when the DPW, when Brutus is there saying, “We need a new, you know, stainless steel truck,” and then the school goes and says, “We need new math materials because they’re 10 years old and the frameworks have just changed.” So to understand that we’re all in this together. This isn’t just about the schools. And our town officials have been judicious and responsible about distributing funds. But our purpose tonight is really about letting the public know where we stand relative to funding for our schools, to be, as Kevin always says, to be as open and transparent as possible, just as all the other departments have been, and how we can work together with our legislators. But these are the facts, and we want to just sort of share this information. Every year, as in every other department, we increase our budget by a small percentage. And essentially, that’s enough to cover basically salaries. But what’s happened over the years is the original funding formula that came out in 1993, when that was created, they could never have anticipated the huge costs for educating high needs, special needs students, for the soaring cost of health insurance and transportation costs. And in addition, educating special needs students, both in and out of district—we do everything in Franklin to keep kids in their schools without having to send them out of district, but there’s a cost to that, and the funds just haven’t kept up. And not in any way—in any way bashing the charter school at all. It is a wonderful school. But the Franklin School Committee gives over $4 million—uh, the town, rather, gives over $4 million each year, but the reimbursement from the state has—over the last five years—it’s been cut in half. And just the difference in the reimbursement is enough to hire five teachers. So in addition to what’s happened in the schools, we have been—which is wonderful, you know, we have all these great programs, an anti-bullying program, a wonderful new educator evaluation system, training for English as a second language, English language learners, rather, screenings, new materials. Every time the MCAS standards change, we have to bring in new materials and new professional development. Unfortunately, they’re all unfunded. So all of those have been added to the cost of funding our schools. So what has been the result? In addition to having to raise fees for transportation, for sports, for all of our activities, we’ve lost a huge chunk of our foreign language program, our music program. When you hear Diane Plouffe talk about kind of the devastating losses in the music program, health and phys ed, we’ve lost our librarians, our kindergarten aides. And then the saddest thing is when we think about the mental health issues that are confronting our youth today, and the absolute correlation between mental health and substance use. And we’ve been trying to get counselors every year, to add counselors, because we so desperately need them, but we haven’t been able to do it. And then I just wanted to address two issues very quickly before I close, just because I had heard this out in the public. Someone had mentioned about, “We should really look carefully at the public employee contracts.” And when I heard that comment, the first thing I thought was, “Well, it’s really—you don’t often see our police, fire, DPW, or teachers appearing on shows like Lifestyles of the Ridge and Famous.” So I checked it out, and I looked at—I just asked, “Just—let’s look at the contracts. 2012—this is the teacher, but these are all similar across all the—our first responders across the town. 2012, 0 percent. 2013, 1.5 percent. 2014, 2 percent. 2015, 2.5. You get the point. This last year—the teachers for this last year did get a slightly higher percentage.” And I began to say, “Okay, what’s up with that?” And then when you factor in the cost of student loans, and then you look at the average teacher salaries, and you look at just 30 miles down the road, teachers can make up to $15,000, sometimes $20,000 more. We’re losing too many teachers, so we have to invest in our teachers and protect that investment. And then just one other need that, you know, myth that needs to be addressed. And Kevin always used to point this one out, that we are—our schools are top-heavy with administrators. And I just wanted to share one thing, just to give you an example of that. We have one person in the entire district who handles all of the curriculum and the professional development, K to 12, for math, for science, for English, for digital literacy, for social emotional learning. One person, K to 12, does it all. And when you look and compare us to other districts of our size, look at the state average. We’re way, way below. And no one’s complaining—I have to say that. No one’s saying, you know, you don’t hear people whining or complaining about it, but it’s just that people do get burnt out. So I have—finally, I will conclude—have seen the bottom line, you know, for our first responders, for, again, police, fire, DPW, teachers. And I didn’t see any line item for bonuses. And these people are the heart and soul of the middle class. And I just keep wondering, “How are they going to benefit from this surging economy about which we’re hearing so much?” So I said—I say, “Citizens in our community have to decide what we want. That’s the beauty of democracy. But that—those decisions can’t be made without information.” So that’s the purpose of tonight. It’s really just sharing as much information as we possibly can. So I say and conclude that tonight is the best of community, the best of government, and most certainly, democracy at work. And I know that Horace Mann would be proud of us. So I’m going to turn it over to— I’m going to let Denise Schultz, who is the Chair of our Public Schools Advocacy Committee. She has done so much to pull all this together, along with Mary Jane Schofield and with the support of the school committee, clearly. But I’m going to turn it over to Denise and have her tell you about—introduce our guests and go from there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ann, and welcome, everybody. This is a very warming turnout to have tonight for this very important topic.
Hi, Denise.
Hi. So, as Ann mentioned, I am the Chair of the Public Schools Advocacy Subcommittee and an active advocate for funding our public schools, K through college, actually. I would really wanted to take a deep dive into the challenges not only facing Franklin, but many of the districts across the Commonwealth. We have a unique opportunity tonight to discuss these important issues around education funding with our elected officials, here—to hear from them, the latest updates on Beacon Hill, and share our concerns and priorities for both Franklin and the Commonwealth’s public education system. I hope many of you have had the chance to read the five-year fiscal forecast that our Town Administrator had put together dated April of 2017. If you haven’t, I recommend going back and reading that when you get a chance. The memo really carefully details all of the expense drivers leading to the challenging budget cycles that lie ahead of us. In Fiscal 17 and 18, the school committee’s budget has already reflected a spend-down of the rainy day funds, if you will, that we have on hand. And we will have constraints as we embark further into the Fiscal 19 budget with rising costs exceeding rising revenues. I’d like to now briefly introduce our panelists, who I know you already know, that we’re fortunate to have with us tonight. Senator Karen Spilka is the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee, and also notably had her start on school committee, which—
Yes.
—warms my heart. She brings a wealth of knowledge about funding and the difficulties and the importance of public education. Senator Richard Ross, from our neighboring town, Rentham, serves on both the Senate Ways and Means Committee and the Joint Committee on Ways and Means. So that is to say, Senator Ross is very well knowledgeable on these budgetary matters. And Representative Jeff Roy, who represents Franklin and part of Medway. Jeff served 10 years on the Franklin School Committee, so I know that he brings that decade of knowledge.
And scars.
I’m sorry?
And scars.
And scars with him to the State House, and he continues to be a passionate advocate for public education. I could go on and on, but we have limited time, so let’s get to our questions. Just wanted to go over the forum tonight. I have six prepared questions that I’m going to give to the elected officials. We’ll hear from them, and then we’ll have about 30 minutes, hopefully, and four questions from the audience. And then we’ll have some closing remarks from the electeds to kind of summarize the evening for us. So, with that said, here we are. In Fiscal 15, the Massachusetts Legislature established the Foundation Budget Review Commission, whose charge was to review and make recommendations on the Chapter 70 and Foundation Budget Funding Formula, which has not been updated since the Education Reform Bill was passed in 1993. On April 26, 2016, the Franklin School Committee passed, signed, and submitted, and subsequently sent to your offices, a resolution imploring implementation of the Foundation Budget Review Commission’s recommendation. We have been through a few budget cycles of advocacy around this report and the recommendations and proposed legislation to address this issue—the issues found, namely, the outdated formulas for special education costs and healthcare—health insurance costs that impact school districts and the Commonwealth. Here’s the question. Could you provide some background on the report of the Foundation Budget Review Commission and some updates from the legislature? I know there might have been some movement in the past couple of weeks, and where that might stand right now.
Okay. You can stop. Absolutely. I’ll start. Thank you, Denise, and thank you to Ann, the whole school committee, and the Town Council, and Town Administrator, Assistant Town, and Finance, and everybody that’s here. I could go on for a while.
We’re all here.
Everybody’s here. And thank you for taking the time to come out to hear more about this really important issue, and an issue that happens to be one of my major passions. I was on the school committee, and that was my springboard to run for the legislature years ago. And I had formed a statewide coalition to lobby the State House to change the education funding formula in the late 90s to be—and we came up with the original principles—to make it more adequate, equitable, predictable, and simpler. And because it wasn’t treating all the school districts fair, I felt, and it wasn’t an adequate funding formula, in 2000—and so that was my springboard. Literally, when my state rep resigned, I thought, “Wow, I can make better change from within than from without in this ed funding formula, the Chapter 70,” and I ran for—I literally declared that day, and I haven’t looked back. We—and I was a state rep for a few years and then became a state senator. And in 2006, 2007, we did make some changes. As I mentioned, there were four major principles: adequate, equitable, predictable, and simpler. The latter three, we did change. I won’t go into exactly how. If anybody wants to go in, you know, talk further, we can. But we did make it more equitable, predictable, and simpler. The adequacy piece eluded us. And so, for years, I fought for a founder—to create a Foundation Budget Review Commission to look solely at the adequate. So much had changed since we first passed the ed reform in 93. It did not take into any account for healthcare costs for our school districts, or so many —in the special education, the assumption for the districts was low. It was—should—we felt it should be higher. Where should it be? We didn’t know. So it took many years to finally pass a bill to create the Foundation Budget Review Commission to look solely at the adequacy, which means, “What does it truly take? What does it cost to adequately educate our child? Our Constitution says we have to adequately.” Of course, we want it to be high quality. We want it to be more than just adequate, but that is our constitutional mandate. So the—so bringing us fast forward to the question of 2015, the Foundation Budget Review Commission is—as Chair of Ways and Means, I get to be on it, and I’ve delegated it, but I’ve looked. Basically, they’ve come out after studying all of the different pieces of adequacy. They’ve made recommendations for specific parts that should be changed to the formula itself. The first one was on economically disadvantaged, making a new definition of economically disadvantaged, and increasing an incremental cost. So those—it costs more to educate kids that are—come from an economically disadvantaged background, so the state should be chipping in more for that. So that—that was basically that. In terms of employee healthcare, we—it was to adjust the rates to reflect the rising rates of the GIC, the Group Insurance Commission, and the costs of healthcare, add a category for retired employees, add an inflation factor that wasn’t there. Special education, they had in-district enrollment rate increasing from 3.75 percent to 4 percent. And in—and the second piece, separate piece, was increasing out-of-district special education cost rate. And the last piece was the ELL, the English Language Learners, to convert an increase from based rate to an incremental rate and apply it so vocational ELL students would also be included. Those were—the—that was one of the major pieces of the Foundation Budget Review Commission. And I can tell you that, as an update, the Senate has passed the recommendations twice. Two years ago, in 2016, we did—the Senate did the RISE Act. It was before the Charter School ballot initiative. We looked at incrementally increasing charter schools, but at the same time, we utilized it. If we’re going to look at increasing charter schools, let’s use it as an opportunity to implement the full recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission. And we phased it in over seven years, but we fully phased in all of the recommendations. That didn’t ultimately pass through the whole legislature. And then in the budget last year, I put it in a second time to implement the Foundation Budget Review Commission’s recommendations. So the Senate is—you know, we support it, and we hope that this, for me, is a priority. Just to tell you, and it has been reported out of the Education Commission. I haven’t gotten it in Ways and Means yet, but it is one of my priorities, too, to get it through and work with the House members and try to get it through. Just real quickly, for the four pieces that I told you, we’ve been trying to at least start implementing some of it through the budget. We don’t have a definitive phase in for—or by the number of years to phase in or amounts, but two years ago, we did start changing some of the aspects. For example, we changed the economically disadvantaged definition. We’ve made some changes in the process. Some communities won a lot of money out of it, you know, they did out well. Some lost. We’ve tasked the administration to take a look to better implement it, so we don’t have winners and losers at the event. I mean, some communities literally lost like $4 or $5 million suddenly. So we held them harmless, and so we added about $11 million to hold them harmless. But the administration is working on a final formula, a final solution to that. We started implementing the healthcare piece, because that is the largest and most expensive piece. And we thought, “Let’s get that in, because that will help all school districts rise and help all districts.” So we started it two years ago, and then last year, we increased the amount of the percentage. And it’s still—I mean, that’s like $10 million to put in even for like 15 percent. And then the Senate, I tried to implement the special education pieces, the two. We fully funded the in-district costs, and we partially funded the out-of-district. And then, if you remember, our revenues went down, and we had to cut about $800 million from the budget. So the special education piece did not survive. I’m hoping to do that this coming year, to get more money from the districts. And so, you know, we’re trying to look at, “What can we do to help get more funding to districts for the pieces that we know would really help districts like Franklin? The healthcare pieces, the special education pieces, and then start implementing the other pieces.”
I would love to jump in and talk about the Foundation Budget Report itself. And if you go to the conclusion and next steps, one line that stands out and stood out to me is, “We submit this report to the legislature with full recognition of the continued fiscal challenges of the Commonwealth and the many competing priorities and worthwhile goals that the legislature must balance in crafting the annual state budget.” So when you talk about, you know, implementing fully the changes recommended in the Foundation Budget Report, if I were to suggest on page nine, if you look at the costs that are associated, it’s approximately $2 billion. And we’re talking about a $40 billion budget, and we already allocate 12 percent of our $40 billion budget to education. So now you’re talking an additional $2 billion. And what we’re trying to do is to identify a source of revenue to fund that. We’re trying to work on legislation to bring down the high cost of healthcare. It’s very expensive in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We do give great care, but it’s at great cost. So we’re trying to rein in those costs. And I know that nobody likes to talk about increasing revenues, but there will be—
[phone ringing]
Please silence your cell phone. But there will be actually—uh, one of the—one of the solutions is to put a question to the voters of Massachusetts, which—if we get over the hurdle at the Supreme Judicial Court, there will be a question on the ballot about whether or not a graduated income tax will be implemented for any income beyond $1 million, which is expected to raise quite a substantial sum of money that will be targeted towards education and transportation. At the same time, there’s an effort afoot to put another question on the ballot, which would lower the sales tax from 6.25 percent down to 5 percent. If that happens, then we will lose yet another billion dollars.
Two billion?
Two billion. So—and that would offset any advantage that we get from the fair tax. So one easy answer to the question, when you’re trying to fully fund the foundation budget, is identifying sources of revenue. And so the legislature has reacted by putting a question to change the Constitution to allow the fair tax amendment to pass. So that’s something you may have an opportunity. The case was argued before the Supreme Judicial Court just last week, questioning whether it’s constitutional to have a tax like this implemented in Massachusetts. And we expect a decision within the next 90 days, and we’re certainly going to keep cognizant of that, because right now, under existing revenues, you know, I don’t know how we can implement this and bring the relief that you need. If you go back to the 90s, we actually reduced taxes substantially in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and that was a huge bite out of the state budget at that time. And we’re still feeling the effects of that some 20 years later. But we continue to look for solutions, lowering healthcare costs, and working with school districts. You know, we’re—we’re going to be dealing with a supplemental budget in the next couple of weeks. And I can assure you, there’ll be an amendment to bring the circuit breaker up to 75 percent so that that—I think—I looked at the figures—that would result in additional $345,869 to Franklin alone. So we’re taking these steps to try and protect communities, because the bottom line is, of all the things that we do in government, education is by far the most important, from my perspective. And having—you know, all three of us have served in local government, and all three of us have a clear understanding of the fiscal pressures that are on you. So we bring that to the table when we’re, you know, engaging in discussions and debates at the State House.
That’s a good point, because we’re all taxpayers, and we’re all parents, too. And consequently, we deal with all the same qualms about how our money is spent as most people in the population. And many of us have some of those special needs, if you will, amongst our own families. I had two kids with ed plans. And actually, when I was first elected to the legislature, they were young. They’re now in their late 20s, early 30s. But they were in that school age that I was considering being concerned about, and certainly, special ed education was very important to me. And I can remember being in one meeting in one of the towns I represented and being criticized for caring about those those kids. And I realized, “You know what? I’m going to become an advocate.” And that’s when I ran for rep. That’s what I’ve been fighting for all the way along the line, and certainly, it becomes something that we’re all concerned with. And then I learned about the Foundation Budget—the Foundation Budget Review Commission—from the superintendents, and it hadn’t really been something that had been utilized. And the Foundation Budget Review Commission suggested that if we take—I forget what the rate was then of special needs students to general population, it was somewhere under 3 percent. But in reality, what the superintendent that I talked to at that time said, “You know, it’s probably more adequately, somewhere around 12 or 13 percent.” So the—we weren’t dealing with real numbers, and I think that’s one of the things we’re hobbled with a lot, is what are the real numbers and how can we address what the real problem is? And I think that’s something we’re all concerned with. Certainly, the sped circuit breaker helped cushion many communities. Some of my communities—uh, one is a very small community with a very small high school class. And the circuit breaker saved their education program for their students and certainly gave their students a higher-quality education than would be suggested just by achievement alone. So it’s difficult, and we’ve got different kinds of schools in our districts. We’ve got tri-county. We’ve got—you also have the charter schools, and they all are competing for the same dollars, yet they’re all public schools.
Yeah. We have a nice segue here to the circuit breaker, which is my next question. You’ve touched upon it a little bit. But I’ll just—I’ll read the question in its entirety for the audience. Yeah, sorry. “Each year, our special education tuition and transportation costs grow, yet the reimbursement rates haven’t changed since ed reform was passed in 93. The state is currently underestimating special education costs by $1 billion each year. In Fiscal 17, special ed costs were approximately 6.5 million of our budget, of which our reimbursement rate was 65 percent of the formula, which equates to $2.2 million to offset these costs.” My question to legislatures, and you did touch upon it briefly, “How can we get back to the 75 percent reimbursement rates, and how can we address this more sustainably going forward?” going forward?
We actually have gotten up there at one point to almost, almost 80 percent, I think.
75 is the highest level that we've always done. That's the, where we're supposed to be at.
But now we're back to 60 something, right?
Well, what ended up happening was we ended up funding it where we, for this year, we've usually the last few years, I could say at least since I've been chair of Ways and Means, trying to fund it between 72 and 75. When we think we sometimes fund it at 75, there, there's some money that's taken off of the top of whatever we put in for some special ed programs and those programs sometimes fluctuate with the number of students. So if the Department of Education and secondary has to take some more, it decreases the overall special education circuit breaker rate. What happened was this year, we thought we were funding it at, again, around 73, 74. The Department of Education guesstimated that the growth rate would be at 4.1, I think, or 4.5 and it ended up being 8.1. So more, many more claims were put in, so it lowered, so it went down to 65 percent. That was something that neither the House nor Senate anticipated until these last few months it played out. There is a supplemental budget, I think that Jeff alluded to, that is going through the House and the Senate. The governor filed a sup, we add more stuff for different things during the year after we do the budget and it's called a supplemental budget. It'll go through the House and then the Senate and I can tell you, there's every intent, I think, in both branches to add, you know, a lot more to bring it up to at least 72 and if we can shoot for 75, that would, to bring it to 75 would be approximately another 36 to 40 million dollars, just to give you an idea of how much that would cost.
Stamp money, as Jeff Nutting would say, right?
And that's in this fiscal year.
That's for this fiscal year, yes, and then we will deal with next year when we do the budget. But that would, again, bring hundreds, that would bring a lot more money to Franklin and every other school district and help out.
Okay.
One of the things I think that's important too, and one of the ways to get a handle on some of that, there was a bill that I filed that would remove the artificial cap on that whole thought. If it passed, it would calculate the district's special education enrollment using the five-year average rather than trying to make an average that kind of fits all years, all circumstances. And so it's taking, that would be a way to get to real-time costs, is to figure it out over five years and take the average and take that as what the real enrollment for special education is. And it's better than them guessing it like 13 percent or 12 percent or 10 percent. It actually takes experiential type stuff, real-time quality statistics and figures it into the computation, which I think is a beneficial way to do it.
And just for facts and figures, the FY18 budget appropriation for the circuit breaker account was 281,231,181, which was intended, as the Senator said, to fund at 75 percent, but it will take an additional 36 million over and above that to bring us up to 75 percent with the increased claims.
Because special education tuition across the Commonwealth was that much higher.
Right.
Just to clear, I think it's confusing, so for those of you who might not understand.
Right. So the two ways that we're hoping to help the special education and the districts cover the costs is through the circuit breaker and then the assumptions built in to the formula under the adequacy that we, yeah, that we were talking about.
That we're not underestimating the difference here.
So there's two ways that we would approach it.
I'm going to go into another sort of, they're all related, these questions. So transportation costs. In Franklin, we have a pay-to-ride system in that if you're over two miles, you pay a fee to transport your child to school. Our total transportation expenses are $2.8 million. Of this, 1.3 million is for special ed transportation that doesn't currently have a mechanism for reimbursement from the state. So my question is, while transportation to the school, to district schools has always been a part of our school budgets and we, you know, absorb those, special, the special ed transportation costs are skyrocketing and nobody could have anticipated those. Are you thinking of ways that we can address these issues, especially with our constrained budgets?
I think a lot of communities have addressed it by either addressing some of those special needs things in-house. I know Walpole, when I represented them, had a very strong program to educate their special needs students there.
Well, we do have an incredibly strong program.
But if you went to Medfield, they were all in high-cost schools all throughout the Commonwealth. So it depends on how the district chooses to address the issue. Figures fall into it as well. I've got 12 communities and I'm sure you do too, don't you Karen? Must have both of that. So when you've got 12 communities, there's a great panoply of different thoughts from school committees that address many of those issues and not always equitably.
I know that we've been trying to foster more collaboratives for, to cover the cost as much as possible and we've had several ideas and this is something that I would love to continue to work with all of you for your ideas to, there, I am not aware of many specific bills in the legislature right now to address this, but certainly, you know, I'd love to work with you to help fashion something that would help Franklin and the other communities.
I mean, you know, it comes down to available revenues like everything else and I remember when those bus fees were implemented, painful to implement in a local community. Then it was followed by sport fees, then it was followed by activity fees. These are, these are the ways that local communities have been forced to grapple with it and, you know, it leads to further inequities and I wish we didn't have to do them at all, but it's, you know, when you're trying to balance all of the competing claims and needs, at the end of the day, this is the system that we have unless and until steps to create more revenue.
And in some communities, you've seen parent associations arise out of a desire to keep a program that the school district was going to let go, but the parents deemed was terrifically important to the children. Whether it's a music program, I know the KP Band parents, for example, under Peter Towson, went on to become national champions and it was largely the support of parents that went out and raised all the funds necessary to keep them in that place because they could have never have gotten it from the district. So I think sometimes it's a matter of people being willing to take on responsibility and to declare what it is that's so important to them and if they're not getting it from the district, sometimes they have to get it from another source. And I think sometimes those are pretty painful decisions, but sometimes they work really well.
Okay. Thank you. Our next question is on charter schools. In fiscal 11, the state reimbursed the town of Franklin $801,000 for expenses paid to our charter school. And in fiscal 18, the reimbursement had decreased to $406,000. In fiscal 18, the town of Franklin paid over $4.1 million for the charter school tuition and the town of Franklin, whereas in fiscal 11, we had paid 3.7 million in tuition. So the state funding has decreased 50 percent over the past several years, while the town's obligation has increased. Can you provide some clarity in the funding formula for charter schools? Why do districts who accept students through public school choice receive 5,000 per pupil where the charter schools are receiving far more than the perpupil expenditure?
I think one of the inequities that we, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We recognize is that statewide schools, districts are transferring over 10 percent of all chapter 70 money directly to charter schools, even though just 4 percent of the students attend them. So that is a question well asked.
Now I'll turn it over to you. Sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. Last year, just to let you know, well, in fiscal 17, the total state aid was almost $329 million that was put towards charter school funding. Last year, for this current year, for fiscal 18, we put in 406,000.6 million. So we have increased it. Again, we tried to put more in and then when we had to cut the over 800 million dollars, we cut some for charter and there was pain everywhere, unfortunately. You know, the way the formula, when it first started, it was a four-year reimbursement and now it's longer, it's 100, we try to do 100 percent the first year and then it's supposed to be 25 percent, 25, 25, 25, et cetera, et cetera. And we haven't fully funded it. This was part of what we called in the Senate, the Rise Act, that I was saying two years ago, where we made some changes to the charter school formula to help the districts with charter schools and have an incremental increase tied to what increases we were giving to the school districts in charter school aid. So that if we were able to afford the school, to give to the districts fuller funding, then more charter schools would be allowed. If we couldn't fund it because of tough times or whatever, not as many would be allowed so that it would be sort of tied. I agree, the whole charter school funding issue needs to be looked at. We need to support the schools that exist. They are our kids and we need to support them, but we have to also have a more fair and equitable funding formula for the districts.
And I would, you know, I agree with you on the school choice piece. It doesn't seem to make much sense to only give $5,000 from the sending district when, you know, they're getting the benefit of a student who's no longer in that district. I think that's a great incentive for school districts to attract more students and those students can bring more money. It's really not a tremendous resource when you only get 5,000 per kid and if you're sending a child to the charter school, it's a greater reimbursement that you have to give. I think we need to be more equitable in that aspect and certainly we'll look at that. I do want to just jump back to the chapter 70 piece to, just to give you a sense of how well Franklin does on that chapter 70 formula. And I took the liberty of trying to do some comparisons with some other communities throughout the state comparable in makeup and size so that you see, now Franklin has, and these are all FY18 figures, Franklin has 5,818 students and gets chapter 70 money of 28,78,451. Now you take, you know, Shrewsbury is always one that is comparable to Franklin. They have 6,039 students. They get 19.7 million. Brookline has 7,541 kids. They get 13 million. Chelmsford has approximately 5,000 students. They get 10.9 million. So you can see, if you look around at comparable communities, we do very well in the chapter 70 formula. And, you know, that, the attempt was to do an equitable balancing of state funding with local funding. And so, at the end of the day, Franklin does pretty well, so I for one like the formula as it is and would be afraid to see the consequences of making too much disruption to it, but I just want to put that all in perspective so people understand where we are in the spectrums.
Well, and that's a valid point. I think the concern from the school committee is that it's still not enough, the formula and what we get, it's...
I would love to get, get more money for education because the return, there's a beautiful chart, I wish I had it with me, but the return on your investment in education is a direct straight line to wages and earnings in life. And when you look at the chart, Massachusetts and Connecticut are at the very top and it's places like, I think Arkansas, that are, they're at the bottom. So the more you spend on education, the better your kids do later on in life. And Massachusetts has been number one in education in all years that they've been testing on a national basis. And I know I've said this in other forums, but I think it bears repeating today. So Massachusetts has always been at the top of the charts nationally. In 2015, Massachusetts decided to consider itself a nation and compete against the world in the PISA test. There are 72 nations in the world that compete on these PISA tests. So after the results came in, Massachusetts, as if it were a nation on its own, no one topped Massachusetts in reading in the world. In science, only one country bested Massachusetts and that was Singapore. And in mathematics, we came in 10th out of 72 nations. So we have a lot to be proud of and I know you said Horace Mann would be proud. I think if he looks back at what we've done with public education, he'd be very proud. So, you know, and we're not complacent about it. We're at the top, but we don't believe that we should just sit back and take a deep breath. We continue to strive to move forward and improve the conditions of education and we will continue to do that. And I give a lot of thanks and praise to the teachers who are in the classrooms each and every day, pouring their own resources into the classrooms, working extra time. I don't think we give enough credit to the teachers and the professionals who are in the system doing this day in and day out and we have a lot to show for it and we should be thanking them each, each and every day.
And they're inspiring a new generation of people.
Right. Yeah, I just want to say, on my way here, I called my son, who's a public school teacher in New York City and he, and this was, what, at 6:30, quarter to 7:00? And he said, "Mom, I'm still at school. I'm really stressed out. I still have a lot more papers to correct." He's a high school history teacher. "And I still have so much more work before I can even go home." And that's typical of his night and he said, "I'll call you when I leave." And I have to say, he just was buzzing me. I saw him calling. So, yeah, I know how hard teachers work and how hard their job is and all of the supporting staff, we ask so much, we ask so much. And that's why I've been working on the Metro West Kids SEL initiative in social and emotional learning and trying to help districts with that as well. But that's why, you know, we really have been trying to approach it, where can we put more funds? And it's not just funds. Where can we work with DESI to support our school districts better? Where can we give them more guidance or push them to help the districts more? You know, instead of mandates, do guidelines. I'm sort of usurping the next question a little bit, but, you know, things like that that are really important to help districts where we can put pressure on whether it be DESI or other aspects of the administration and offer as much funding as we possibly can. I can tell you that as Chair of Ways and Means, and I know this happens in the House too, I meet with every single senator and ask for their priorities in preparation of preparing the whole Senate budget and nine times out of 10, the first thing out of each senator's mouth is, "An increase as much as you can to chapter 70, as much as you can." And then the next issue, just to let you know, is unrestricted local aid. So those are the top two priorities of senators and I know, I've spoken with my counterparts in the House, the same thing in the House. So, and if you realize, when we went through the recession, even though we cut a lot of the Health and Human Services, Public Safety and other things, local aid was not cut. Local aid was not cut and there was, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars that we had to cut. Even this past year, when we had to cut, we did not cut unrestricted local aid and we did not cut chapter 70.
And our Ways and Means Chair is very diligent about getting input from all members and I appreciate the fact that she got very busy today and...
When's your meeting?
Was it noon? It was supposed to have been at noon time today.
Right, right, right.
But I know we'll reschedule, but yes, I think we all listen to each other, we all try to take into consideration what our districts need and the people with the faces that sit in these audiences, who we all know are suggesting we need to be doing for them and I think we take it all to heart and we take it very seriously. And I think, obviously that's by our presence here tonight, you know that.
And to segue into the next question, we do something similar on school committee in getting together and prioritizing budget requests into the next year. And on... And on my first term on School Committee, we did that two years in a row. And the number one thing we heard from administrators was we need more counselors. And that really bothered me. I wasn't on our budget subcommittee on the, my first term. And when I was reelected, I said, "I want to get on budget. I want to see how I can help meet that unmet need of why we need more counselors in our school. Our children are suffering, they're anxious, they have more social, emotional needs." And we have an amazing SEL program here. Karen leads on this issue as well. But we have also this opioid epidemic and we have the President of the Safe Coalition and Vice President, Co-President, their Safe Coalition is here tonight. And I know all three of you are doing amazing work and really helping champion this issue. But there's a link between this opioid use and early intervention. And we see these, you know, the increased needs in our students coming to schools. And it's not limited, you know, to increased concerns about mental health, escalating stress and increased opportunities and exposures to drugs. What action could the legislature take to meet these pressing needs? Counselors, social, emotional learning, et cetera?
Well, I certainly have, have a greater understanding of what's happening with the opioid epidemic. It's the public health crisis of our generation. No question about that. The emergence of the community coalitions from the grassroots, working in our local communities and identifying people and reaching out to people can't be understated. That has, that has been a tremendous resource for us. And I see that Jim and Jen are here tonight and, you know, I see the work that they do day in and day out and it's making a difference. I mean, in 2015, we lost a very high number of young people. We're not losing people at that rate today, largely as a result of the conversations that have emerged in this community and largely because there are now support networks in place in this community. But we are seeing the number of saves is increasing, so that's telling us that people and kids are still using. And, you know, we are, you know, the, the CARE Act I, which was implemented in 2016, was a whole sweeping slew of changes in, in terms of restrictions on the number of opioids that could be given with a prescription. Let's get these opioids off the street. Asking school districts to implement substance use programs and the screenings that are being implemented. I think that gets into your, your next question, but, so I won't get into the funding aspect of that.
Thank you for the questions ahead of time. I was just glad you were there.
But, you know, we have, you know, we have implemented a structure at the state level that's trying to provide more beds, trying to provide more treatment programs, trying to provide more prevention programs, but we're also relying on local communities and grassroots efforts to tackle this because this is a problem that took a long time to, to make and it's going to take a long time to correct it. One other thing that I've noticed some communities are doing, and I don't know if it has been talked about in this community, but some communities themselves are joining class action lawsuits against the farmer companies to recoup some of the costs that they've suffered. I know Quincy is involved in that and I think I read in the Milford Daily News that Hope Dale is considering joining. That might be something for Franklin to consider. I don't know how you would calculate the costs, but, you know, you might want to consider meeting with somebody to address the financial losses that this community has suffered. I'm also happy that through, through our efforts, the, the governor finally released the $50,000 that was to go to the Safe Coalition to finance some of the resources. And I know through Assistant Superintendent Light's efforts, the, the mental health program with St. James College, St. William James College. Hopefully, now that you've got some additional funding, that this program can be implemented. That's a great resource for the community. But what you're seeing are lots of folks sitting around the same table, working together and coming up with some solutions. So it's not just what's happening at the state level, it's, it's at all levels of government.
You also see families, as I suggested, who are picking up the funding in after-school programs for students whose programs are being let go. You have parents and family members, victims or people who need safe housing, helping to expand that as well. And I know there's a family in Rentham trying to start Gilly's House at the old Sheldonville Nursing Home, which is owned by a Franklin family, and they're working hard to get that up and running as well. So I think there's a lot of good things going on out there. Out of crises come things that we can appreciate that people have done that are right. I know Trinity Church in Rentham is responsible for those 2069 signs, which Ron Tebbetts went to school with me in high school. He took it upon himself to make sure he's gotten as many of those out. I'm shocked at how far out from Rentham those signs go. I see them in all corners of the state that I travel to and it's kind of like, wow, it caught on. Yeah, it really did.
Yeah, I just want to add, and Jeff just gave a great overview. You know, our first major substance abuse opioid bill looked at the, the end part, the treatment and other parts, and focused on that. Two years ago, we did the, were upfront with the prescriptions. And I want to say that Massachusetts had several first-in-the-nation pieces in that bill in limiting the number of days that you could get an opioid prescription for. I had spoken to, I was being interviewed for a newspaper article and the reporter asked me something about the bill and he said, "Yeah, my wife had one wisdom tooth taken out and she got 60 pills." Six zero, 60 pills. You don't need that much and would end, and, you know, yet what ended up happening was other people would find it. We found out that in open houses, in real estate, when houses were going, were on sale.
This is like the Oscars when they think our answers are going to go down, they play music.
Can we pick our, can we pick our music, you know? So, so, should I get up and dance too?
Yes.
I won't sing.
I paid a seat.
Because everybody will leave if I start singing. But so we're, we're trying to really look at it in a comprehensive approach and support the communities as well. And that's why we've tried to fund in many communities because in Metro West, there are some terrific programs, like the SAFE program here and other programs. We also are looking at fentanyl and outlawing that and tying it to the federal so that if every time something, they change one little molecule, whether it be carfentanil or something, currently, we have to pass a law to outlaw it and let the DEAs and the AG have, have, you know, jurisdiction. That's crazy. We need to make it so that it's, you know, they, they can take care of it immediately. So that's, that's going on right now. But I also think, and one of my priorities in this past budget, again, we had to cut some of it and will be for this budget, is working on mental health. You know, we have focused a lot on the substance abuse, but I believe a lot of substance abuse is a symptom of mental health issues. I grew up in a family, my father had major mental illness, and I just know how it impacts families and it impacts the individual and the support that's needed. We need to really figure out how to have true mental health parity, how to get rid of the stigma and how to really help people in a, in a purposeful and long-lasting way. And I think that joining together that with the substance abuse will help make a difference.
And I want to, just one other thing I want to highlight is in the last legislative session, we actually did a, I want to get the website right because if I'm going to send you somewhere, I want to make sure you get it right. It's called PromotePrevent.com and it's a special legislative commission on behavioral health promotion and upstream prevention in Massachusetts. So we spend a lot of money reacting to it, but I think the statistic is only 3% on prevention efforts. So this commission is looking at how we can turn that around and spend more dollars on prevention. And that commission is having hearings now, so if you want more information, go to that PromotePrevent.com, offer testimony, go to one of the hearings and participate because it's going to affect what happens.
Thank you. Last question and then we'll open it up to the audience. We have had to comply with numerous unfunded mandates in recent years, including but not limited to billing prevention and intervention, behavioral health and substance abuse screenings, mentoring and induction, educator evaluation, sheltered English immersion and various other changes to the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. While all of these great ideas are well-intended and important to meet student needs, the number of state-driven mandates and reporting requirements can feel overwhelming and sometimes redundant. How can you address this lack of funding for the mandates? And are there any initiatives underway that could provide regulatory relief?
Yeah, as I said, I can tell you, since I've been Chair of Ways and Means the past three years, I do not think that we have passed an unfunded mandate. And I will, coming from a school committee background, I know what that means and I remember arguing with my legislators about passing unfunded mandates. So I am very aware of that. And when we did the ESPT training in the opioid prevention bill, I made sure that we put funding in to train the nurses and to, to make sure that it was not an unfunded mandate. I think that, as I said previously, one of the things that we can work with the Department of Early and Secondary Education is to try to offer guidelines instead, that if we have a program to help schools to say, "These are guidelines." When we did a few years ago, we got rid of the old chin system and had a whole new system for, for the, for, for kids. We had a truancy prevention program, but it was guidelines where DESI would issue guidelines and say, "Schools should, should," I mean, they, all schools should have some sort of truancy prevention, "but these are guidelines for you to fit in and to work with them to not have it mandated." But, you know, again, if there are specific other issues that, that you have that you feel, we're certainly willing to work with you and try, and try to figure out a system with that.
I know you've sponsored some amendments and I have as well. I had a bill that would impose a moratorium on all mandates while study group reviews mandates imposed on local schools and their economic impact. And I had one also as a following, allowing DESE to waive any unfunded education mandates so long as doing so wouldn't reduce the quality of education. So, I mean, there's a lot of times we're proposing different amendments. They don't always go through, but at least you can see that we're active trying to avoid the pitfalls of adding more costs to our local education.
On the ESPT screening in particular, you'll notice if you read the language, it actually says, "Subject to appropriation." That's one very key piece. It's implemented if money is appropriated. Secondly, the legislation did recognize that many school districts were probably already doing this or they had some other alternative programs that they were implementing. And the legislation says simply, if you're doing something that meets the intent and satisfies the requirements of the statute, then your alternative, whatever you're doing, can be utilized, you know, subject to approval by DESI. So certainly, we're aware of the, the concept of unfunded mandates and I will agree with Senator Spilka, we have strived not to do that in, in the last several years.
One of the things that's difficult is we have an organism that's made up of 351 cities and towns and all very different, all very different locations, different economic situations. And nobody would think that a political entity would have 351 subsets that don't really go together. So it's up to us as a legislature to try to find a way to blend them in a way that works best without disrupting things for other areas of the Commonwealth as well. So I think at least the three of us from this area all are on the same page as far as what's important to the Franklin, Medway, Hollis, and Rentham, Plainfield, Norfolk. This whole area is very well-suited to being together and we do everything we can to make it come together and to work.
You know, some, some excellent reading if you want to try to figure out, you know, why we do what we do and why the legislature takes such a great interest in what happens in the schools throughout the Commonwealth. Well, Massachusetts is one of few states that actually has a constitutional requirement for a free and appropriate public education. So I always recommend that, read the McDuffie case from 1993. If you can't find it and you want a copy of it, let me know, I'll send it to you. It's absolutely great reading, which goes through the history of little, small schoolhouses back in the 1600s and takes you up to present day and talks about how, what a, an adequate education is under the Constitution in Massachusetts and what we need to do. So that's why you see us taking a great interest and not only taking a great interest in what happens, but taking a financial interest in what's happened and spending 12% of our state budget on, on education in local communities, which has traditionally been a local operation, but the state is, is, is putting money in to the program. And I think with Franklin, we're contributing approximately 50% of the school budget from state funding.
Okay. I'd like to invite the audience to come down. There's a microphone here and there's a microphone there. And as you're coming down to ask a question, I'm just going to ask a follow-up question on that last one. So what I heard on the unfunded mandates, because I know there's been things in the past three years, so they're coming down from DESI. So does DESI not coordinate enough with the legislature and how it's all coming down? Maybe I should know this, but I'm, I'm still new to the budget committee, subcommittee, so I'm still learning all the in the past.
I mean, I would love to hear, get, you know, work with you to hear what, what, you know, these unfunded mandates are and try to work with DESI, you know? And we can bring DESI out here. We can have you guys come into the State House and have a meeting and coordinate and facilitate, you know, a discussion where you can ask this and you can ask other questions as well. That sometimes helps.
Okay, great, thank you. We have our first question.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Senator Spilka, Senator Ross and Rep Roy for, for tonight. I want to, my name's Jim Derrick, I'm the President of the Safe Coalition. I want to add to what you said, Senator Spilka. You're absolutely right on the mental health parity issue. It's actually been expanded. It's the Mental Health Parity and Addiction Act of 2008, which is a law which is not being enforced. So I would really urge our representatives and your colleagues to, to, to look at a way to make Massachusetts a leader in the enforcement of that. And of course, Patrick Kennedy has taken this up on a national basis. Without Rep Roy's, Representative Roy's leadership, this coalition wouldn't exist. And we represent eight towns now. And I'm thrilled to say that Franklin, without a doubt, is a leader in this, in the issue in the schools. And Peter Light, I'd like to specifically commend him and, and everybody else involved, the new superintendent, with creating this public task force to help the public schools navigate what really is the problem, which is the straight line from mental health issues and social and emotional health. It's a straight line to the newspaper report that we have an overdose and unfortunately in 20 cases in the last four years, fatalities right here in Franklin. This is our number one health epidemic. So rather than being a question, I simply, I don't know enough about the finance relative to what can be allocated, but I'd like to urge the public schools, the leadership represented here, to fund social and emotional learning and, and to fund more counseling positions. We had a young man, and I won't go on too long here, but we had a young man come in, Derek Getchell, and spoke to 17 health classes here. And each, I was at each one of those classes, we had a line of kids waiting to talk to him. And they were talking to him mostly about mental health issues and struggling with this. It wasn't long ago that I was walking these halls when this coalition had just formed and somebody that was a public school employee told me, "We don't have a heroin problem in the schools." And that was an invitation for me to say, "No, we don't have a heroin problem in schools." And that was an invitation for me to say, "No, we don't have a heroin problem in schools, and we don't have a lung cancer problem in schools either." This is where the problem starts. It actually starts not even in the high school, in the middle schools. And I applaud this town for recognizing that. So I would just urge our representatives, Representative Roy, to continue to do what you're doing. Senator Spilka and Senator Ross, anything you can do to push. And this parity issue is of paramount importance. I'm a parent of a son that couldn't access proper treatment when he was 10, 11, 12, 13 years old for this issue, because the parity law is not being enforced. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Right, that's music to my ears. I mean, these are issues that are really important to me as well, and that is why I have tried to, and will plan on for this year. There are ways, and I'd love to follow up with you and anybody else who has ideas. We tried to, last year in the budget, support existing mental health programs from children through adults through our seniors, and there were a few gaps that we saw, so we tried to create a few new pilot programs, particularly for kids. Again, trying to address the needs of our kids. And unfortunately, some of that, when we had, I feel like a broken record, but when we had to cut $800 million, some of that was, ended up on the cutting floor as well. So I'd like to go back to that, and if people have ideas how to better either fund or support mental health parity, or what we can do to advocate for that, I would love to do it. And that's part of the reason why I really have focused on the social and emotional learning initiative and having several forums for the Metro West, because it really is important. We need to support our teachers, we need to support our parents, and how best we can help our kids in a holistic way of bringing them up, not just academics, not just focusing on the curriculum, because all of our kids need it, some more than others, but all of them do.
Are there any other questions?
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Kai Olson, and I live in--
Sounds like you're from Texas.
Yeah, just about.
Just south of London.
Yeah, it's north.
North of London?
Thank you.
That's where Rentham is, too, by the way.
The question I have is about the funding of the mental health programs that you've been discussing, and in connection also with the opioid crisis, and in the national government as well, there are debates about drugs, where they're coming from. Really simply, just, I think, and I know a little bit about it, but there's a difference between illegal drugs, which is, you know, an ongoing problem around the world. The drug trafficking around the world is, you know, its own, it's its own big business, and it's away from mainstream. But what's happening nowadays is that the industrial drug companies, if you like, have been manufacturing what we see as social drugs, you know, for 100 years. And Jim just brought up a point, which is cigarettes. I don't smoke anymore, I haven't smoked for maybe 20 years. I never gave up, but every time I think about it, I just don't have a cigarette.
Good.
In the same way, drugs, you know, good drugs, your doctor prescribed them to you, it must be good for you, and as drugs have got bigger, better, and more effective, suddenly we find that our kids are going to the cupboards and taking our drugs, you know? And so you, as our government, have had to come up with ways to fund the programs we're talking about with our, our money. And my, to get to my question is, do you have anything that you can talk to us about, about how, in the same way as the cigarette companies were eventually held responsible for the fact that, you know, people, that we found out that cancer, lung cancer, was a direct, there was a direct link between those diseases and nicotine, you know? And with the research that's doing, and, you know, our kids, it's horrifying to find out that your kids are drug addicts, you know, the sort of, you know, the vision of the hippie drug addict, and these are just ordinary people who are hooked in these things. And do you have any, so do you have any kind of, do you have anything you can say about how, as well as us having to fund all this, how legislation against or for drug companies is--
Or lawsuits. I know the Attorney General is looking into, like they did with the tobacco companies, looking into some of the drug companies, particularly those that held their products out to cause no harm and not being addictive when they knew that many of them were. So I know she is looking into that.
And as I alluded to earlier, there are many local communities that are actually joining class action lawsuits to pursue just what you talk about. There's something unique in the statistic that the United States occupies 5% of the world's population, but utilizes 85% of the painkillers in the world. That's something that's astounding to me, because, you know, I always viewed this as a lovely country and a great place to live and enjoy, and it strikes me that how can we have so much pain? But it's also a place that you turn on the TV, and every other ad is for some pill or antidote that will solve every issue in the world. And, you know, we've become a culture that relies on these drugs, and, you know, opioids were sold to us as a non-addictive substance that was the answer to pain, and it turned out not to be true. And I hope that those who are responsible for this madness will be held accountable. And I think that day of reckoning is coming as more momentum builds for these lawsuits, whether it be the state taking action or local communities taking action, because there are some bad actors out there who did some very bad things, and people are suffering, and people are dying, and we can't let it go on. So I fully support these efforts to go after and hold them accountable, and I thank you for raising that.
And not to throw another thorn into the mix, but you're going to be dealing with it here in Franklin as well. Several of us legislators, there were a dozen of us that went out to Colorado before the ballot question passed here in Massachusetts, and what we observed as far as high potency marijuana and all the itinerant issues they cause, it's coming. And it's not quite up and running here yet, thank God. Many of us working behind the scenes have been able to slow it down a little bit, but it's coming. And I kind of feel very sorry about that, because I think all of us that went to Colorado, and there were a dozen of us, came back thinking, "We have to defeat this," and there was no way we could. The police chief from Walpole went with us, and he said, "This is going to be the next scourge." I know you don't want to believe it, and I know the kids and advocates for pot, but the second day we were out there, we had a guy attached to us that was from the industry out there, and I looked across the room, I said, "He's a bad man." And it was all about the profit, and it was, they had no regard for the human beings that were involved. And I have probably 100 pictures in my phone from that trip, and it was just an amazing revelation to me that we were behind the curve, that the industry was ahead of us, and there was nothing we could do, because we had no funding, no resources, really no voice in the matter. I would have liked to have been able to nip it in the bud right here and have not had that pass legislation, but it's not good.
Yeah, I do just want to mention, I mentioned a supplemental budget is coming through the House and the Senate. We are hoping to include some funding for a public health campaign, particularly targeted, you know, for young adults and for adults, to expand the knowledge about what this all means to our state. But, because right now, there was no funding that was allocated, so I'm hoping that we can allocate some for that.
Do we have a last question?
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to keep this really brief. This was not going to be my original question, it was going to be on something else. Having just gone to the funeral of a young man from Holliston just last week, the age of 28, who died while in recovery, it's, there isn't anybody in this room who doesn't know someone who has been affected by this. There isn't anybody. It's very personal. Back in the day, doctors prescribed oxycodin like it was confetti. It was out there. When my mom passed away, she was not someone that used that, but it was always prescribed by her doctor, and when we had to clear out stuff in her home and stuff, the amount of oxycodin that was in her cupboards was mind-boggling. And I'm saying this because we joked and said, "Gosh, if we went out on the street, we could make a bundle of money on this."
Correct.
And that's not, it's not funny, but I mean, we're just looking at this, and we found a way to dispose of it and get rid of it. The question I have is, how do we educate doctors? Doctors are very good at prescribing, but they don't always know how it's going to interact. I had an amazing GYN doctor, and I had to have a surgery, and he prescribed for me, for my pain, good old Tylenol. And the woman in the room with me, her doctor had her on an opiate. And the nurse came in and she said, "I really admire your doctor. He is always one who'll give you enough to just take the edge off, so you can get up and move around, but then get back to bed and let your body heal." And the woman in the bed in the room with me was hopping around all over the place because she was not feeling any pain.
Not yet. When it wore off, she would.
And that's the point. And the point was that I didn't need that. I was fine. And we need to educate doctors, and we need to let them know. And as you say, there's so many ads out there just promoting one drug after another, after another, after another, and it's ridiculous. And doctors need to know. Very often, I will call my pharmacist and talk to him about a particular medication and say, "Can I work it with this or that?" And I get more information from my pharmacist than I sometimes do from my doctor.
I just want to mention, in the bill that we passed two years ago, there were several pieces that directly addresses this. Providers, not only doctors, but nurse practitioners or anybody that can prescribe, it's mandated training in their education, as they're getting educated, and then it's mandated to be a part of continuing education about opioids and addiction and alternatives to pain medication. That is now a major part of the education and continuing education. We also mandated, and this was when I mentioned there was a few firsts in that bill, this was another first, we mandated that before a doctor could prescribe an opioid, that prescriber must have a discussion with the patient, what is it that they want? Do they want some sort of opioid or something? Can they, do they want something different? I mean, it's amazing that we had to put that into law, to mandate that there be a description or have a discussion, because we heard time and time again, there'd be surgery, there'd be wisdom teeth, the doctor would fill out the prescription and just leave it at the front desk, there would be absolutely no discussion.
No instruction.
So we mandated that, and there are other pieces. And then we also have that they can only be for seven days, and that if they need a refill, it has to be in person, it can't be directly called in to the pharmacist. And for the first time, and this was another first in the nation, that if you go to your pharmacist and you get a prescription for 14 opioids, you can do what's called a partial fill. You can say, "I only want four." So that if you either don't feel comfortable talking to your doctor, or afterwards realize that, "Wow, that's way too much, I really don't need it," you can say, "I only want four." And we weren't certain if the federal government would come back and say, "You can't do that," but we, the state, we as a state pushed the envelope and did that. You can't go back then and fill the rest of it, you'd have to get a new prescription from your doctor. But those are some of the major points, and there are other ways to look at alternatives and to limit the number of opioids, as we've said, that are going out there.
Bless you.
Thank you.
You know, before we passed this legislation, believe it or not, veterinarians got more education and training on the use of opioids on pets. And we thought it just made sense, if you're going to do it for dogs and cats, you might as well do it for human beings. So that was a major step forward, and the Mass Medical Society came to the table and recognized that this was necessary. But it was a, it was a New England Journal of Medicine article, I believe it was the 80s or 90s, that boasted about the non-addictive quality of opioids. That's what, that's what doctors were being told, and they were being taught by a major medical publication. It's such a fraud, and look where we are today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your question.
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Jennifer, and I'm with the SAFE Coalition. I don't really have a question, but I just wanted to make a quick comment. I know it's 8:30, and we all want to get out of here, but just to kind of round out kind of a larger landscape around the opioid epidemic in our town and in our communities and in the K through 12 and college timelines. So from, you know, we're hearing this unbelievable understanding from a state capacity what's been gone, what's kind of happened. I mean, there's been incredible bills passed, the prescriptions, you know, like we were saying, you used to be able to get 90, now you can get three. You have to talk with your pharmacist, you have to be put into a database that's tracked that didn't exist more than three and a half years ago. So from a state level, the three folks here have created unbelievable bills that have passed that have really enforced doctors to become more educated, pharmacists to become more educated, and a tier-tracking system. From the ground-up perspective in the SAFE Coalition, what we've done with kind of the generosity of Peter Light and Jeff Roy, is we've been allowed to talk with high schoolers around what their opportunities are to learn around opioids and addiction. So while we know that social, emotional learning is so critical in regards to addiction, what we do every single Wednesday night is talk with high schoolers around what their opportunities are to say yes or no to medication treatment. So, you know, while it is going to take an incredibly long time to file lawsuits and bring down Purdue Pharma, what we can do is talk with kids around their opportunity to say yes to picking up a script. So while, you know, there are these massive billion-dollar programs, we have to keep them in business. And so while this is a very grassroots thing, it's something that a child and a parent can take action with. You can do something, you can change something in your home. You know, we just got this incredible grant for $50,000 that Jeff Roy really, really spearheaded for us.
All three.
All three, incredible, thank you. And what we're doing with that in the six communities that we work in, is that money is allowing us to teach more kids and parents around drug education, it's allowing us to develop disposal medication kits, so people aren't able to go into open houses, so there aren't extra medications left, you know, when you're doing work in your home, so that if you can't get to a police station because you don't have a car, you still have the ability to take away and dispose medication in your household. So from a state perspective, you've changed incredible things, you've provided funding to us at the local level where we can get into people's homes, provide education, allow students to understand what they can ask their doctors, allow parents to ask what they can ask their doctors, and we're, we have the funding now to create at-home kits to dispose of medications. So I hope that provides a little bit more background as to, from a state level and a local level, really what we're doing to kind of blend things in the middle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Delarco.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for all your work, and thanks to the school committee for us having it here. Yes, I just wanted to know that, she kind of touched on that bill. My son broke his thumb when he was a sophomore, and he went to Dr. Brennelli, and he gave him like 25 pills, he only used three or four. This year, he broke his wrist, went to Dr. Brennelli, they actually sat him down, talked to him, he said, "How many pills do you want, Rob?" He said, "How many pills do you want, Robin?" And he said, "Give me two days worth." He went on 800 Moltrin afterwards, so that's really working, so I honored two guys.
Right, that's great to hear. Oh, good.
Same doctor, three, four years later, it worked out great.
Good.
And I just want to touch on, I know you guys are working real hard, but, and you guys too, and Peter Light and Sarah, is the education has to start at a very young age. We have, we have to get down very low. From what I've saw, and Jeff, you know, me and you, you know, worked together with the SAFE Coalition, I still remember that first conversation. You know, "I've had enough, you've had enough, let's get things going." So, but I believe it's--
Can I say that, Jen, is this what you had in mind?
Yeah. And that night, when we said we have to pick a president, I guess we picked a very good guy, because we both said, "Jim's our president," remember that?
Yep.
But if we can get them educated at a very young age, and, you know, whatever money you can get for us to do it, I think it's going to work, because I said it that night, it's almost like drinking and driving when we were young. We got educated, you don't see that happening hardly at all anymore. So I think that's very, we have to start at a very young age, bring them all the way up, make sure they're ready to go to college. Because when they go to college, there's a whole nother drug issue coming up. The kids tell me that too, so we've got to prepare them for that. But my commend is all for that. That's where we have to go forward, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to point out that our chair has put together this wonderful pamphlet on the fiscal '19 budget development, and this is available online. I know Franklin Matters has shared it, and I think it's on our school committee website, but it will be. And we're in the middle of the budget process, so we have meetings ongoing in the next couple months. So I'd like to turn it back over to our electeds and have them give closing remarks with wisdom that you can imbue upon us as we're doing these budget negotiations with our administrator and counselors and your wisdom from Beacon Hill.
I'm hoping to meet her soon.
Sorry.
Let me know what's really, let me know what's really important, and I'll tell her all about.
I just want to say that we're only as strong as all of you, and that this is, you know, teamwork, this is teamwork at its finest, and that we all need to work together in terms of raising healthy, resilient, strong kids, that we never know what they're going to encounter, and we can always plan, and we, the major thing that, you know, I think, and this is why the Social and Emotional Learning Initiative is so important, that all kids will come across troubled waters at times, and the best we can do, I think, is help them learn how to have the skills to weather those troubled waters, whether it be, you know, in school, in their family, in their peers, or wherever they are, to have the skills and abilities to work through that and come out stronger. That is something that I personally strive for when I look at funding and budget items and programs, because we can't anticipate everything. But I want to thank all of you for what you do to help us raise stronger, healthy, more resilient kids in Franklin and all of Metro West, that you are making a really big difference, and I just can't help but thank you enough.
And hopefully the support we get helps us to remain healthy, resilient, strong adults that are good leaders for those children too, because they watch everything we do. And you have to take into consideration everything you do in your household, how the kids interpret it. When they are making decisions in their lives, many times they make them because they didn't have good role models at home. So let's all try to be good role models for one another and bring up a really great generation of strong, resilient children, so. Thank you all for coming tonight, too.
I do want to say thank you. I'm absolutely impressed with the amount of people who turned out on a weeknight to talk about a relatively dry subject, but it's something that--
Oh, it's fascinating.
Oh, fascinating, yes, riveting. I will be thinking about this all night, and the numbers will be dancing through my brain as I try to sleep. But, you know, you talked about troubled waters and trying to, trying to help people navigate these. I always talk about, my view of government is taming rivers. I'm not going to go through the whole story of where that comes from, but I think that is, is a vital role of what we do as a government, is to tame rivers. And it's so vitally important that everybody work together in this effort. Because what is your government? Your government is you. We're of the people, by the people, for the people. And when you are thinking about your government, think about yourself, think about the roads you drive on, think about the schools that your kids learn in, think about, you know, the public health matters, think about the clean air, think about the clean water. Those are all aspects of what your government does, and we can't do it without you. And I value the relationships that I have with my colleagues. This is, this is an incredible team to work with. We're all on speed dial, we all represent each of our communities to the fullest extent, and we all, you know, have your needs as our priorities. And it's incredible to work with these folks up on Beacon Hill. Working with members of the school committee, I know all of you personally, it's great, working with members of the town council, working with members of the administration, both in the school and the town side. These are valuable relationships, and that's how things work very well. And that's why Franklin is always rated as one of the top communities, not only in Massachusetts, but in the nation. And I will leave it with the notion that U.S. News &amp; World Report found Massachusetts to be the best state in the whole Union. And there's a reason for that, because we all work together, and we live together, and we play together. So thank you for being a part of that.
And actually, I just heard late this afternoon, I don't know if anybody else heard, I didn't even hear who--
I did.
--who rated, but the safest communities? Franklin's the third safest community in the state, so give yourselves all a round of applause.
Hey! I saw that, too.
Thank you very much.
Well, I just want to close it out by saying thank you to Senator Ross, Senator Spilka, and Representative Roy. And also wanted to thank my colleagues on the Subcommittee of Public Schools Advocacy, our Chair, Ann Bergen, and Mary Jean Schofield, they were immeasurably helpful in putting this together tonight. But I also really wanted to thank our central office, our Superintendent Peter Joyce and Miriam, who all gave great help in putting the questions together and making sure I had my numbers right. And also to our Deputy Town Administrator and our Town Administrator Jamie and Jeff, thank you for taking the time to meet with us as well, as we learn and trying to navigate these interesting budget times ahead. And thank you, everyone, for showing up on a Tuesday night to talk about what I find fascinating, but I'm glad others do too, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. [applause][1789.76]